Good evening. We hereby call the Alexander County Board of Commissioners July 22, 2019 meeting to order, and we'd like to start with invocation by Vice Chairman Ronnie Reese, and then I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you will, please stand.
Let's pray. Before we come to you today, and we thank you for the blessings of this day, pray that you give us directions and wisdom as we move forward in this meeting, doing things that would make Alexander County to move forward in jobs and business. Pray for your protection over our citizens and our county employees, especially our law enforcement, emergency services personnel, as they put their lives on the line for us each day, protect them. Thank you all for all that you've done for us. Just give us direction tonight, help us have clear minds, make wise decisions, and all these things we'll ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we would like to amend our agenda. We'd like to move the closed session, which is the closed session for the Commissioners, to after the consolidated human services meeting. So we'd like to move it to the very end, and certainly entertain a motion to do so.
Make a motion to accept as stated.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Like to now entertain a motion to adopt our agenda as amended.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda with the amendment.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, or discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. And do we have any public comment? Okay, I'm sorry. We have Mr. Jim Young with us to discuss firing of guns in the county. Mr. Young, if you would like to step forward as I'm reading our rules and regulations for public comment. The public comment period is intended to allow Commissioners an opportunity to hear citizens' comments and concerns. It's not a time for the Board to discuss issues or answer impromptu questions. Time period of 15 minutes has been established for public comment at the beginning of the first regular meeting each month. Length of comment for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Please select a spokesperson to represent a group of citizens with the same concerns or questions. Comments are to be directed to the Board as a whole and not to individual members. Citizens will be expected to be civil and courteous in their language and limit comments to issues of public concern. Topics requiring further investigation will refer to the appropriate county officials or staff and may be scheduled for future agenda. Any citizens wishing to address the Board during public comment shall call the clerk to the Board prior to the meeting to have their name placed on the list. So Mr. Young will now hear your comments.
Thank you. I live at 130 Waterside Drive, which is off of Church Road down on the lake. It might make you a little more familiar, we're in the cove up from the sandbar. My wife and I have been there now since April 11th last year. We moved from Newton up there. This year, there was a resident moved in across from us in the cove, starting around 3:00 in the afternoon on Easter. This, I would suppose this individual is the one that's shooting the firearm. And it's not just one or two shots he's shooting. Sounds to me like a 9-millimeter or something bigger handgun repeatedly. It happened again on Memorial Day. It happened again the weekend prior to the 4th of July, and on the 4th of July. But the 4th of July, and during these times, I had called the Sheriff's Department, the EMS line, and asked them if they could send somebody out and talk to them. We've got grandchildren there at the house, neighbors on both sides of us. You can hear the neighbors yelling at the person shooting the gun, asking them to quit. They don't. On the 4th of July, somebody showed up with a rifle with a clip in it, probably, I don't know how many bullets was in it, it made me go in the house. I'm a ex-military, I was in Vietnam. I've been around firearms all my life, I support the Second Amendment, but I don't like somebody shooting a gun with houses on both sides and across from us. The deputy told me that he's shooting into a bank beside his house. This individual has been laughing at the Sheriff's Department, as soon as they leave, he starts back shooting. I talked to the sheriff about it the other day, and he said the best thing I could do was come here, so here I am. I would encourage you all to enact some kind of noise ordinance or a safety ordinance, if you can, to stop this kind of behavior. I don't want a firearm, I go to a shooting range and shoot it. I don't shoot it in my yard, I've got a large yard with a bank I could, but I don't. The people next to me have got grandkids, one of the ladies told me today, she's scared to let her grandkids out when this guy's doing it, or this person. I'm not sure, I hadn't seen him shoot, I'm not going over, it's not my business. But that's just my comment to you all, I would like to see something done to, you know, prevent this kind of noise going on. The sheriff told me he gets 30 to 40 gun calls a month in the county. So my fear is either somebody's gonna get mad and go over, and there's gonna be something happening that shouldn't happen. That's all I have to say. I hope you all understand why I'm here.
Thank you very much, sir. Certainly understand your concern, and we'll investigate this matter.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks, sir.
Next, on the agenda, we have a public hearing for the approval of road names and petition for renaming. County Manager Rick French will present the information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The staff request approval of the following road names, as listed in your packets. The names meet the regulations as required. Names have been checked for duplication, sound indexing, and things of that nature. The three road names we're considering tonight are B and L Lane, which is off of Liberty Lane, Grapes Grove Lane, which is off of Church Road, and a petition has been submitted to rename the following road from Jack Shook Lane to Hill Acres Lane.
Need a motion to open a public hearing regarding road name changes and renaming?
Need to open.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Public hearing is now open. Do we have any concerns? Anyone wish to address these three roads? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Need to close.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion regarding road name approvals? All in favor of closing the public hearing, please raise your right hand. And then we'll need a motion to approve the three road name changes.
Make a motion to approve the three road name changes.
About a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have Mr. Doug Galisby, who's going to share with us our EMS earning American Heart Association's Mission Lifetime Silver Plus Award. And Bob, the screen is going in and out.
We've got a new bulb, and that's right now the best it can do. It might be our projector.
And we're having a little bit of challenges there, so just bear with us, if you would, please.
Good evening, and thank you for giving us this time to speak. I'm here to discuss, or correction, we are here to discuss the award that we received from Mission Lifeline, which is the Silver Plus Award. And I brought my training officer, he's a little nervous, first time speaking in public over here, and I was gonna let him tell you a little bit about it, since he and the staff are the ones that really deserve this award and everything. His name is Kevin Richards.
Good afternoon. So this award actually goes out to our paramedics for the top level of care they provide for the county. American Heart Association began this in 2014, and the purpose is to connect EMS providers and the PCI hospitals together to reduce the mortality rate in the presence of a heart attack. The program provides evidence-based metrics to measure our systems' performance. This is the first year Alexander EMS applied for the Mission Lifeline Award, and since this was the first for us, Silver Plus was the highest we could obtain, even though we crossed the bar for Gold Plus. But several data fields go into play, however, I'd like to highlight some exceptional care our paramedics are providing to the county. To treat a patient suffering a heart attack, paramedics must have knowledge, insight, speed, activation, and accuracy. Paramedics must have the education to be able to read the cardiac monitor strips, 12 leads, and know the correct treatment. They maintain this skill by 120 hours of recertification. They must have the insight to recognize the presence of a heart attack, as not all heart attacks have chest pain. So therefore, the interpretation of the cardiac rhythm is very important. Speed, so a lot of speed plays into this factor when it comes to the Mission Lifeline. So paramedics, we have 10 minutes to place the cardiac monitor, interpret the rhythm, transmit the EKG to the receiving hospital, and be en route within 15 minutes to that receiving hospital in the presence of an MI. Now, sometimes this is not possible if the patient goes into cardiac arrest, so therefore we have to stabilize the patient before we can leave. Paramedics have 10 minutes to activate the cath lab at the receiving hospital, and less than 90 minutes total from the first patient contact until the heart surgery begins at the hospital. So Alexander's median time is 69 minutes, and that includes our travel. Paramedics must be accurate in stabilizing, giving medications, and providing airway support. So none of this would be possible without the support of our medical directors, Dr. Emmon and Dr. Goodnight, and the first responders and the support of county commissioners. Do you have any questions?
Sounds good, Kevin. Thank you for coming.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Absolutely appreciate that.
Appreciate what you guys do.
Have a, an error, an omission on my part. I skipped right over our Commissioners' report, and if it's okay with everyone, I would like to entertain that before we go to our item number four. Do we have any Commissioners' reports? Now, back towards the end of June, we had a very positive meeting with representatives from the school system and from the community college regarding some plans and actions that'll be taking place here on this campus. That was very positive, and very thankful to be able to put heads at the table and to come up with reasonable thoughts and plans regarding long-term usages of the facility, of the college's plan on being here, on the school system, and funding. It's just a lot of good things, very energizing to have people working together.
Yeah, I hope to see some work going on here shortly from what's gonna be happening for the, getting ready for the students to come in to the early college, so we've got some things in place, as Chairman Peel said. So, working with schools and with CVCC, they were all present at our meeting, and we all come up with a plan that everybody, I think, can live with, so, and that's good. I also attended the 4th of July, the fireworks for Kenny. It was, I was pretty heavily attended, I kinda circled around a little bit. As a Commissioner, just seeing who was here and how big a crowd it was, it looked like it was, you know, a good turnout, and I know my grandkids, they enjoyed what they got to see of the fireworks, so I think it was good.
We'd certainly like to tip our hats to Sheriff's Department and all emergency response people, fire departments, and EMS, and rescue squad, people that have been involved in the great travesties that have taken place, wrecks, fires. Seems like we've had a month or so of very unfortunate events, and, you know, those men and women don't close their eyes and things go away, you know? They get lasting memories of a long time. So we're, our thoughts and prayers are with them, and our appreciation is certainly there for all that they do, and all that they've experienced, and all that they're carrying with them. Without any further reports, we'll move on to item number four. We have Brian Horton from Western Piedmont Council Governments, and Michael Poe, Division Project Development Engineer with the Department of Highways, Highway Division 12, to share with us the North Carolina 127, Project R363A Enhancement Options. So glad to have you guys with us, and look forward to what you're gonna share with us.
Well, thank you, Chairman. Yes, my name is Brian Horton, work for Western Piedmont Council Governments as Transportation Planning Manager there. Also manage the Metropolitan Planning Organization, or NPO for short, and Commissioner Yoder and Manager French help serve on that Board, and help guide some of the decision-making that happens to direct your gas tax dollars coming back to this region and prioritizing those projects. But we're here tonight to give you an update about one of those large projects, probably of key importance to this county in the Bethlehem area and that community, is the widening of NC 127, from Kleinger Mill Road in Hickory, across the lake, Lake Hickory, Kataba River, into the Bethlehem community, all the way to Ritchie Road in Alexander County. Next slide, please. So just quick background, I told you these gentlemen helped serve on this organization. It's been around officially for this region since the 80s, but basically, we qualify based on population. It's large enough that it's important for this area to help guide those transportation dollars, that you don't have to rely on Raleigh to do that for you, that this area's large enough. And Alexander County's one of four counties in our metropolitan region. That forms up the Greater Hickory NPO. And one of our tasks as the NPO is to look at those projected revenues that historically have been available, and to prioritize the funds. And this project was identified historically, we had the capacity to do it, and now it's moving to fruition. So just for context, there are of course other projects in Alexander County, but this is the big one that is going to be completed in the near future. Next slide, please. And so things move from the long-range plans to kind of the short-range programming or budgeting, and that's what you see here, there's not just this project, but also there's a bridge at Duck Creek, there's turning lanes at US 64 Church Road and NC 16 County Home Road, but this, of course, is the big project, $30 million-plus to widen NC 127. Next slide, please. And it's to start right-of-way acquisition about a couple of years, and construction a couple of years after that, so it's currently in design. And that's why we're here tonight. We're at a milestone, or a key point in the decision-making process where we need to really inform that design. So we know it is, the typical section's going to be a median-divided four-lane section, and carry that kind of from, you know, Kleinger Mill and Hickory. Across the river, of course, there's opportunity to utilize or reuse the existing bridge that's there, and build a new parallel bridge to accommodate the four lanes, and continue those four lanes up to, all the way potentially to Ritchie Road. There's even an alternative, of course, at Bethlehem School, looking at possible new alignment. But the main reason we're here today, or tonight, is to get your feedback, your kind of early-stage preliminary input as to whether or not there should be, what types of pedestrian or bicycle facilities there should be with the project. If it's two lanes divided, there's opportunity, do you put on-road bicycle lanes, do you put sidewalks, do you put a multi-use path? And I'm gonna talk a little bit about what that looks like. To date, the environmental review and design have looked basically just a typical section that's largely curbed, from Shiloh Church north, or just north of Rinke Dam Road, all the way into Hickory, and the more of a swale rural shoulder section that's north of there all the way to Ritchie Road. Next slide, please. And I do apologize that bulbs dimmed. Do you have this all on your screens? Okay, good.
If these lights were turned off, we might consume five of them, maybe show up.
Turn the lights down a pair. All right. So when I talk about multi-use path, I don't know if everyone knows what that is, but basically, it is a shared path, both for bicycles and pedestrians, that is off-road or immediately parallel to the road. And this corridor really creates an opportunity. I think if you're very familiar with the corridor, you know there's not a lot of driveways or street intersections, especially from Rinke Dam Road into Hickory. Because typically, a multi-use path, if you're gonna put the cyclists and pedestrians kind of on a trail-like facility adjacent to a roadway, you're concerned about turning vehicles out of frequent driveways or frequent streets. Next slide, please. And so, and the median section helps with that, of course, too, because you have fewer left-turn conflicts. But there's a lot of guidance, of course, of what you can do for a multi-use path. It really does create kind of a road-parallel-trail-type facility for two-way travel. Instead of having those one-way bicycle lanes in the road, you really have a shared bicycle and pedestrian facility in one that's on the side of the road. Next slide, please. And like I mentioned with this corridor, this corridor has great context, or the lay of the land works to minimize those conflicts. There's very few side streets, both in Hickory and in the Bethlehem community and Alexander County, very few driveways, very few side streets that intersect with 127 south of Rinke Dam Road. Now, where they do have those intersections, there is design guidance, of course, what you can then still do, if you opt for a multi-use path, to really protect, you know, pedestrians and cyclists of how to make those crossings. Next slide, please. So here's just those pictures, of course, and anybody that's ever looked at a parcel map, or kind of the geography of this area, knows too, the right-of-way's kind of been set up to the side, to the west predominantly. This is looking south, back towards the lake, towards Hickory, from Bethlehem community. You see that there's more ample land and right-of-way, if you will, more on the west side. Next slide, please. And that continues much, all the way up to Rinke Dam Road, till you really get to that substation just north of the post office. Next slide, please. So the exciting thing about this has been kind of the perfect storm. The Bethlehem community has a community plan underway that's contracted also with the council governments, and John Pilkington's been the key staff liaison for that, so he can correct me if I say anything wrong. But essentially, the citizens, both the steering committee members, as well as attendees to various public meetings, have been excited about this plan and what means to guide the future development of that area. This is one of the highest-growth areas of Alexander County, and with this project, there's an opportunity to maybe help beautify, create a gateway, as well as create some trails. And that was a key voice concern of the, of the plan-making process, was can you better link, especially over the lake, as well as along the lake, say, to Wittenburg Access, up to the Rinke Dam commercial node, because that's kind of a community center, if you will, the post office, the grocery store, all those things right there. Next slide, please. So the cog, as part of that plan, did some conceptual renderings using SketchUp. This is kind of the Cadillac, though, this has everything, and we haven't even costed this option because we realized you don't need bike lanes if you have a multi-use path. But this conceptual rendering here shows kind of a multi-use path on the west side, a sidewalk on the east side, median with turn lanes, and even bicycle lanes in this particular rendering. This is looking north across Rinke Dam Road. Next slide, please. And this is a little bit closer on the ground, on the western side, a multi-use path that would be, you know, across from all your commercial on the opposite side. Your commercial on the east side has more driveways, the land on the west side doesn't have as many driveways. Next slide. So of course, all those are pretty pictures, but you wanna know, well, how much is it gonna cost? So next slide, please. So we've asked NC DOT to help cost some of these options, and predominantly, the two options we asked to look at were, would you do separate bicycle lanes in the road, and then sidewalks on the sides of the road? Or would you do a multi-use path that really can combine your bicycle lanes and put that on the side of the road? And so, and again, the side of the road that was picked, and this was also with county staff input, was west side predominantly for the multi-use path, and sidewalk more on the east side because of the existing commercial node. And so, next slide, please. And so, you can see, we're looking really the same length of the corridor from Kleinger Mill and Hickory, across the Lake River, and up to Rinke Dam Road, or just past to the northern segment of Shiloh Church Road at 127, of what that typical section can be. It's, the middle's kind of the same for motorists. It's beyond that, whether you include bicycle lanes and/or sidewalks in a multi-use path. Next slide, please. So you don't have to digest this all right now, but there is a cost differential between doing just a sidewalk with bicycle lanes in the road versus doing sidewalk and a multi-use path. And the primary reason for that is because there, well, the grading changes a little bit. With a multi-use path, you do have to have a slightly wider berm, but the good news is by foregoing the bicycle lanes, you offset that. So potentially, it could be a wash in right-of-way costs and grading costs. So really, it's, what's really more driving the cost differential is a current policy, and my colleague may talk to how this policy might change in the future, but the current policy is, when you do off-road facilities, back-of-curb facilities, there's a cost share that's required of that local jurisdiction, be it town, city, or county. Wherever that falls, that local jurisdiction is asked to help share that cost, and it's scaled based kind of on population. So for Alexander County and its size, it's a 30% match, basically, for that incremental cost increase of adding that off-road or back-of-curb facility. And that, but that policy, that's what it is today. And so that's how these, these cost estimates were developed, was with that cost policy in mind today.
What would be tomorrow?
We don't know. They're currently developing new complete-street guidelines. Complete-streets is a term for, you know, that all users get to share a street, and that makes it complete. And part of that is to look at policies that may forego someday potentially the cost sharing or reduce it. And so, but, and you're not signing today on any dotted line that says you must do the cost-sharing agreement, but this is a milestone in the project's development that we really need to know, is it worth continuing to look at a multi-use path and/or sidewalks?
Question. And when you talk about the 70/30 split, how long since the counties have to pay the 30%?
How long?
Yes. What's the estimate? Does it all have to be paid upfront? Does it have to be paid by the year? Is there a time limit because the small rural counties trying to come up with the type of revenue that needs to be able to implement a program of this nature?
I think there's several different options that can be done with that. I know we had corresponded with Brian and County Manager on that a couple of weeks ago, and I'm going off of recollection, but, you know, sometimes it's paid at the end of the job, at a lump sum, where it can be paid incrementally throughout the construction.
Can you say through construction? Is each phase of the construction is completed?
Right, it would be set up, you know, in payments through construction. Usually, I believe it was, did I say quarterly?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be the way we would prefer to do.
Right, that's why I just wanted to ask, I mean.
Settle up at the end.
Right, yeah.
So when it starts, we need to be looking towards having the money to finish it out, correct?
Correct.
But we prefer tomorrow's option better.
There has been some discussion in the DOT world about potentially changing some of that, those requirements, to try to get some money upfront, but currently, that's not the practice. And one thing just to point out here, that's a really big item, is this, these estimates, unfortunately, do not have any cost that could potentially be associated with additional bridge width, which could be substantial. We're hoping to have you some of that information here in the next several weeks to a month or so.
So the bridge width would be on the west side and not the east side, because therefore you could put the sidewalk on the west side, correct?
Correct, the multi-use path. If we go with a sidewalk option, our current policy allows us to construct a sidewalk on one side of the bridge, there would not be any, any cost for that option. Where it comes into play is with the multi-use path. And I guess one thing to mention, multi-use paths are really a sort of a new thing that are just coming about. DOT doesn't have much policy to guide us. DOT doesn't have much policy to guide us in that realm. One of the things that we've started doing here in Division 12, just recently, in looking at this, and the way these estimates were put together, is both the sidewalk and multi-use path options were cost-shared at a 70% DOT, 30% county, in the case of Alexander County. That additional five feet of multi-use path, we're actually taking what we would have had to pay for that in-road bike facility, and applying that cost towards that. And as long as the cost for that five feet of multi-use path is not more than the cost of those in-road facilities, DOT would pick up the cost of that.
So, you're only talking about, what, six feet? Four feet? For the, what's the bike trail on the highway? How wide is it?
Currently, they're shown at four feet on each side. So, we have a total of eight feet.
All right. So, that would give you eight feet on the multiple-purpose route, which would be a good width for multiple purposes. Would that be right?
Typically, a multi-use path is 10-foot.
Okay. I'm sorry.
But what you're saying is, if the cost of those two bike lanes added up to X amount of dollars, and the multi-use path added up to exactly X amount of dollars, DOT would cover 100% of the cost. Is that what I'm getting?
It's a little bit more in-depth than that. We're requiring a cost share on the first five feet of that multi-use path, because our existing sidewalk and pedestrian policy that's been in place for the last 25 or 30 years addresses that and requires us to do that. But when we start talking about that additional five foot on the west side, you know, since we're taking that cost of pavement out of the road, we're essentially transitioning that to the multi-use path.
So, at least on the first five feet of that multi-use path, at least, we're going to have to pay 30% of that. There's possible extra charges on top of that, but we don't know that yet. Okay.
Correct. And that's a Division 12 practice that we've just started doing, as this issue has come up on several projects. As Brian alluded, the department is currently in the process of potentially coming up with a new revised complete-streets policy, which, you know, I keep hearing rumors that it's going to address some of this cost-sharing responsibilities as we move forward. So, if something like that does come out, we would need to revisit this.
What type of timeframe are you hearing from something possibly could come out of that? How do they work?
You know, I've been hearing that something may come out this year, but I've been hearing that for a year.
What about north of the intersection of Rinke Dam and 127? So, not necessarily a multi-use path, but anything else planned there?
Well, it's currently been looked at as a swale section, so there are no curbs. So, your pedestrians, based on the design speed, have to be kind of a little bit farther off the road. And so, it has right-of-way implications, even doing a sidewalk and/or a multi-use path, right? Any, either of those options really kind of add right-of-way. South of Rinke Dam, unfortunately, the right-of-way has kind of been more set up. But, I mean, you could take, you could potentially take a look at it, it just seemed kind of more cost-prohibitive to do north. And we are working, of course, though, through the community plan process, looking at potential changes to your development standards and/or zoning, what have you, that would hopefully set up sidewalk as development happens.
And that's already in place. But I guess the only thing I would say is, you know, if you could run a sidewalk from Rinke Dam up to, oh, what's that other little road there? But all the way in front of the grocery store, up past the church there. That's, that area's used a lot, and it's not very easy to walk. And when there's the Bethlehem star lighting there, people park at the grocery store, then walk over past the church to the place where they have that at, and a sidewalk would be really great there.
So, you're talking about up where the old restaurant used to be, right there? That road right there? Yeah.
S&amp;K Road.
I couldn't think of it, but I knew where it was. Right.
So, that would be, as a resident of Bethlehem, that would be the best option of stopping a sidewalk. Not necessarily having a multi-use path that runs all that way, but I think there would be a lot of use of a sidewalk there.
Brian, you mentioned a redirect around Bethlehem School area. Can you allude to what you're saying?
So, north of Heritage Farm Road, looking at a potential realignment of the main line of 127, keeping the existing 127 kind of frontage, parallel road, local circulator, feeder road, but then realigning the main line more straight, to straightaway up from Heritage Farm, going towards, you know, Tig Town and Ritchie Roads.
And the lane that goes to nowhere, that would be eradicated there, right before you get to Bethlehem School, going towards Bethlehem?
Oh, you're talking about the turn lane? That doesn't quite, that doesn't quite go to the school road? Yeah.
Yeah. The realignment alternative is really a direct result of the public input that we received when we had the public meetings back, I believe it was November of 2017.
The traffic there is horrendous in the morning and the afternoon, and nowhere to go.
Right.
So, yeah, we've been looking at that situation with the school system, and are looking at options as well. Right now, just going back to this project, though, our current schedule is looking like sometime late this fall, coming back out with an additional public meeting, where folks can see a lot more detail about potential impacts of those options.
So, we have time to decide kind of what we're thinking to do over the next month or a couple of months?
But you're asking us tonight to...
Is it okay to proceed with this typical section of sidewalk and/or multi-use path in addition to this, I heard the sidewalk up to S&amp;K Road?
Yeah. Wouldn't you want to do that? I mean, that makes sense. To proceed? Yes. Non-binding, but to proceed?
Right. Yes.
Yes. I would agree with that.
Absolutely.
I'd say proceed also.
To, need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Proceed in a non-binding way on the plan going forward. Certainly entertain a motion for that.
I move that we go with the existing pattern that they have up, and it'd be non-binding until they come back with a more strategic plan and cost.
Understood. Motion, we got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes. Thank you, fellas.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
In relation to the realignment that we talked about from Heritage Farm Road, has that decision been made? My concern, I'm a Bethlehem resident and a member of Bethlehem Baptist Church, and our churches that have just been rebuilt, we're very close to the road, and naturally, we're concerned about the foreland. And we're also concerned about the traffic there at the school.
No, no decision hasn't been made on the realignment versus following the existing alignment. I think either way, from what I've seen of the preliminary plans, there'll be some straightening out of the road through that area, but even in the realignment option, it's tied back into the existing, you know, the time to get up there to Tig Town. So, I think either way, it's going to be fairly similar along the church's property, other than when you get down to the fields and whatnot. But I know that that was discussed, and we had some concerns raised over that area in the first round voting.
Well, we've seen a lot of surveying going on, but nobody knows any decisions apparently.
Right. Like I said, we'll be coming back out this fall and showing those options and looking for input on that.
Well, it'd be safe to say there are no decisions at this point. We're looking.
Correct. We've been doing preliminary design on each option, looking at the bio-motor impacts, and doing various studies that need to be done before they...
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, fellas.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. Next on the agenda, Mr. French will share with us two items regarding the award recommendation of the 2018 Waterline Extension Project, SRPHD 170098, for Alexander County, as well as a resolution of the tentative award. Mr. French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, this commissioners, everybody has a copy of the maps of the project, the current water project, so I just want to point that out. And then later on in tonight's agenda, under the budget amendment, you have a budget amendment that ties in with this. There's two things, as Chairman Peel mentioned. First is to award the bid to Buckeye Bridge LLC. They're a licensed North Carolina contractor, and have successfully completed similar projects in the past. McGill Associates, who is the engineers for the project, recommend that the county award the project to Buckeye Bridge for the total contract price of $4,699,248. It is also recommended that the county establish construction contingency in the amount of The tentative award should be made contingent upon approval of the project bid information packet by NCDEQ, Division of Water Infrastructure, and that's the first item that we need to approve, Mr. Chairman, as the awarding of the bid.
Well, that also really kind of brings closure to about a 20-year project. So, we heard Mr. French, and we entertain a motion for the recommendation of that part of the project.
I move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one question. Do we need to approve a contingency of $117,000?
That's included, yes. Be included in the motion.
Included.
Yes, sir.
So, we're approving the $4,600,000 odd and the $117,481?
Yes, sir.
Both of them in the same motion?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? On favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes 4-0. And then, the second part, Mr. French?
Also in your packet are the four copies of the bids for the four bidders. What we need to do, lastly, under this item, is a resolution of tentative award, and it basically, it says that Alexander County, North Carolina, has received bids pursuant to duly advertised notice, therefore, for construction of the 2018 Waterline Extension Project, whereas McGill Associates have reviewed the bids, and whereas Buckeye Bridge was the lowest responsible, responsive responsible bidder for the 2018 Waterline Extension Project in the total amount of $4,699,248, and whereas consulting engineers, who's McGill Associates, recommend tentative award to the lowest bidder, now therefore be resolved, the tentative award is made to Buckeye Bridge LLC in the total amount of $4,699,248. And again, it's, this action is based on the, is contingent upon approval of the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. And we need to approve the resolution, and we recommend that, Mr. Chairman.
So, you've heard Mr. French will now entertain a resolution to approve all that he just said.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution of tentative award to Buckeye Bridge LLC upon the approval of the water approval people in Raleigh. I don't remember what the name of it is, but they have to approve everything that we do.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? On favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes, and we'll have a third piece of that later.
Yes, sir.
Next, I'd like to designate voting delegate to the NCACC Annual Conference, and Mr. Larry Yoder will be our representative there. I'd like to have a motion to approve Larry being our voting delegate.
Make a motion to approve Larry Yoder as our voting delegate, NCACC.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? On favor, please raise your right hand. On favor, motion passes. Thank you. Mr. French now will share some board appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council appoint Abby Dejeunet, two years. Reappoint Krista Hyatt, two years. Ronnie Reese, two years. Leanne Wisnant, two years. Kristen Eichardt. Chris Bowman. Todd Jones. All those three appointments are for two years. The Library Board of Trustees appoint Colby Cockrell for three years.
You've heard the recommended appointments. Now, entertain a motion to approve such appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the appointees.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes. And next, we have Mr. French with our Budget Ordinance Amendments, 1 through 5.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To increase, Budget Amendment Number 1 is to increase the sheriff's office budget for the use of federal equitable sheriff funds received in prior years. These special funds must be used to increase the law enforcement budget. Expenditures will be for two rifles that were ordered with a fiscal year 2019 purchase order, but they can't be delivered until three months later and inspected, so they're delivered in fiscal year 2020. The later delivery date requires the expenditure of, to be charged to the 2019-2020 budget. Budget Amendment Number 2 is to increase the sheriff's office budget to purchase specialized equipment with federal grant funds passed through the North Carolina Department of Public Safety Governor's Crime Commission. The grant began in the 2018-2019 budget year and ends in the 2019-2020 budget year. The Budget Amendment allows for the remaining grant funds to be spent before the end of the grant period, which is 9/30/19. No local match is required. Number, Budget Amendment Number 3 is to increase the sheriff's office budget for the use of state funds from distributions of the unauthorized substance tax. These special funds must be used to increase the law enforcement budget. The funds received in prior years and will be used to purchase a vehicle. Budget 4 and 5, or Budget 4 is to adjust the project budget for revised cost estimate from the July 11 bid opening, and that's on the water project. And likewise, Number 5 is to increase the county water and sewer fund, local match for the water extension project. Revised cost estimates from the July 11, 2019 bid opening provide for additional county funds to supplement the NCDEQ loan. The original county matching funds of $99,427 were transferred to the project in fiscal year 2019. The additional $358,594 is needed from the local funds will be transferred to the state, to the project fund in fiscal year 2020. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions about those, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we've heard the budget amendments and the explanations. Will hereby entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the items 1 through 5.
Any discussion on Budget Ordinances 1 through 5? On favor, please raise your right hand. Next, we have the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things want to mention. One is, we're in the process of working with the Western Piedmont Council of Government staff members concerning the Alexander County Parks Plan and Dusty Ridge Plan. We're setting up some recreational surveys, and also setting up some parks meetings starting in August. Also want to point out that Jack Sims, and a representative from Carolina Land and Lakes, will be attending our August 5 meeting to revise... will be attending our August 5 meeting to provide an update on activities. And in response to the noise complaint that we heard earlier, there's been a review by the county attorney, the sheriff, and the district attorney to try to look at the noise ordinance and to make some recommendations back to the commissioners. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, unless you have any questions, or we have a number of closed session, but that will happen later on in the meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we've had our consent agenda, and we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes, and we will now change gears as we have moved our closed session to afterwards, and we're now to the point where we will go to our Consolidated Health and Human Services Board meeting. And I'd like to welcome the dawning of a new era, one in which we have given great thought and planning to, and we believe will posture us to better serve our people. And we're really excited about what's taking place here. We have public comment for this meeting. There'll be no public comment, so I would like to call on Ms. Leanne Wisnig to come and orientate us to social services, and to the Health Department, and to the Senior Center, and to confidentiality policy.
Thank you, gentlemen. And you stole my comment. It was a new era for our county. So, it must be a great, great minds think alike, I guess. But it is a new era. It's exciting. We've only been in operation a few weeks, but some great things are happening. I've shared with you the organizational chart, which is in your packet. We're still in process with the Department of Social Services. Theirs was a little more complex, and there'll probably be an edit, and I'll share that with you. We're trying to get that uniform to match and to be systematic across all three departments, so that's been a job in itself, but I think it's looking really nice. I'm going to actually ask each of our department heads. We're going to start with our Department of Social Services Director Patricia Baker's going to actually do your orientation for social services. We're going to try to make it brief because we can't cover every nuance that we do, so, and I know you've already had a meeting before this, so we're going to kind of give you lots of information, but kind of at that high level, and because you'll have years to learn all the nuances that we do, right? We'll go into more detail as we have more meetings. So, our DSS Director, Patricia Baker. And we're still working out the kinks, so this first one's kind of a trial and error, so we appreciate your patience. Hopefully Chad's got the next powerpoint.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, having us. I would like to provide you a brief overview of some of the DSS programs that we administer, and I will be sharing some data on those programs. Social services in North Carolina are state-supervised and county-administered, and direction comes from the General Assembly, DHHS, and rulemaking commissions. Counties enter into annual written agreements, which y'all know, we just recently had to sign one, called MOUs, to comply with the requirements of law as per General Statute 108A-74. Major program areas are covered by this MOU, except for Medicaid, which is covered directly on 108A. Most state-level legislation impacting DSS is contained in the General Statutes 108A, 110, and 7B. I've included a list of the mandated programs on the next few slides, just for your information, and these are those administered by DSS along with the federal statute, the state statute, and any administrative rules that apply. You should also have received a link to documents describing all DSS programs created by DHHS in your packet. And so, the next few pages are all mandated services, and there's about four slides worth of those. These are just informational, and I can get you another document if you want that to carry around and for bedtime reading. Economic Services is our next slide. North Carolina DHHS has divided programs into areas or divisions. The State Division of Social Services includes Economic Services, Economic and Children's Services. The Division of Aging and Adult Services includes Adult Services. And the Division of Health Benefits was created from the Division of Medical Assistance several years ago, and that supervises Medicaid. So, now we're on the slide that's before you. Childcare subsidy helps eligible low-income families pay for childcare. It allows caretakers and parents to work or attend school. Funding for this program comes from both state and federal government, and the federal funds come from the Child Care Development Block Grant, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, which is TANF, and the Social Service Block Grant. And there's a lot of letters, so this is the alphabet soup. TANF, SSBG, and those things. State funds come from an annual allotment to the county and additional Smart Start allocations. Last fiscal year, we paid $928,000 to providers on behalf of an average of 196 children per month in the childcare program. As of June 30, there were 211 children in the daycare program. Food Nutrition Services is a federal food assistance program that helps low-income families, and the monthly allotment is issued on an EBT card, which looks a lot like a credit card. And individuals would go to the grocery store and swipe their card, and then the benefits would be withdrawn from their balance. A total of $4,838,862 in benefits was issued to Alexander County residents. There were a total of 3,876 recipients in 1803 households at the end of June. The next slide is Medicaid, and Medicaid is a federal and state-funded health insurance program for low-income individuals and families who cannot afford healthcare. At fiscal year-end, there were 7,820 individuals receiving Medicaid benefits from Alexander County. Approximately $49,310,320 in claims will be paid on behalf of Alexander County recipients for FY 1819. In your packets, you should have received the FY 20 projected Medicaid services expenditures for our county. It actually has a long list of every, so you could see the whole state. It's three or four pages long. Medicaid service expenditures for our, I'm sorry, Special Assistance for Adults provides a cash supplement and medical assistance to individuals who are in adult care homes, which you would maybe know as rest homes. There's also a Special Assistance in Home program, which allows individuals to stay in their home, but receive additional supportive services and also a cash benefit. They would also continue to receive Medicaid. Adult care homes are unlike nursing homes in that staff do not provide medical care. They can, however, give medications and provide personal care services. We had 68 individuals in the county receiving SA benefits. The next slide is Work First, and the goal of the Work First program is to provide families with cash assistance while moving able-bodied adults into full-time employment. The program promotes work, requires a personal responsibility, and helps family get and keep a job. Additionally, I talk about the Energy Programs, which are the Crisis Intervention Program, also known as SIP, and the Low Income Energy Assistance Program, which we call LEAP. These programs provide households with heating and cooling assistance. In the case of SIP, it must be a heating or cooling-related emergency, and individual family members are allotted, not individuals, but families are allotted up to $600 a fiscal year in which they can come in and apply for benefits. LEAP provides for a one-time yearly benefit to those eligible, and they are usually, the amounts are $200, $300, or $400, and it is a one-time-a-year benefit that is sent directly to their energy provider. Both SIP and LEAP are capped allocations that come to the county from the state and the federal government. Next slide is Child Support. Child Support is a nationwide program that ensures both parents support their children to the extent of their ability. The federal legislation mandating the Child Support program is Title 4D of the Social Security Act. Sometimes the program is just called 4D. Child Support is based on the needs of the child and the parent's ability to provide support. This means that the absent parent may either voluntarily agree to an amount of support per North Carolina guidelines, or they may receive an amount court-ordered. We use local, state, and federal resources to locate non-supporting parents, establish a legal child support order, establish paternity if necessary, and to collect child support payments. Issues concerning custody and visitation are not part of what we do in child support. We had 1,478 children in 1,384 cases who received child support as of June 30, and $2,106,912 was collected on behalf of Alexander children, and we established paternity for 134 of those children. Services. Adult Services provides older and disabled adults and their families support, and includes protective services, case management, adult daycare, placement services, guardianship, and other services for the elderly. 108A of the North Carolina General Statute establishes a process where adults who are abused, neglected, or exploited may receive protective services. Sometimes these services are voluntary; other times, they have to be court-ordered. When we feel that it must happen, we sometimes seek a court order to ensure that the adult receives our services. We had 171 APS reports last fiscal year, and of those, 96 were accepted, meaning that they were further investigated. Adult Service Social Workers also provide licensing, monitoring, and case management services for adult care homes, which are your assisted-living facilities. And we go out on complaints, and sometimes we help the state when there are issues. We had one facility that was shut down a while back. Guardianship involves a provision of services for individuals who are declared incompetent by the court, and the court orders us to be the guardian. And we currently have seven individuals for whom we are guardian. Additional programs that are not mandated, but which we provide services from are the Home and Community Care Block Grant, and we receive funding for nutritional services, in-home aid services, and home improvement services. Next slide is Child Welfare. Child Welfare Services are comprised of intake, assessment, in-home services, foster care, and adoption. Child Protective Services are legally mandated. They're non-voluntary services for families that, I mean, we are dealing with allegedly maltreated children, and those who are at imminent risk of harm due to lack of action or protection by the child's parent or caretaker. This is probably the worst part of our job. We see a lot of terrible things in the CPS and the APS areas. CPS protects children from further harm and supports and improves parental caregiver protective capacities to assure a safe and nurturing home for each child. There are three components to child protective services, which we call CPS. We have CPS intake, CPS assessment, and CPS in-home services. Last fiscal year, there were 706 CPS reports. Of those, 422 were further investigated. 7B 101 provides the legal definition of abuse and neglect. Additionally, CPS in-home services are legally mandated, and they're an integral part of the child services continuum. They provide service to families who have a substantiation of abuse, neglect, or dependency, or a finding of services needed. The purpose of CPS in-home is to maintain the safety of the child while helping the parent or caretaker with more effective parenting practices. The average number of in-home cases throughout the year is about 15.
Hang on one second.
Yes.
So, you're telling me that you've got 422 cases that meet the legal definition of abuse and neglect, but we've only got 15 cases of in-home services?
No, that's 15 average. So, these cases move through. Sometimes they move straight into foster care; sometimes they move into in-home after they're investigated. This is an average of 15, but it's not, it's a continual moving of cases. So, the workers are working.
But, no, that's not what I'm saying. I guess what I'm saying is that you've got 15 at one time, or you've got 15 for the entire year?
No, that's average, 15 at any given time.
Okay, all right. That's what I wanted to know. Okay, thank you.
Foster Care Services arrange the temporary care of a child outside of their home, which also includes recruitment, licensing, and the training of foster parents. Supervision of placement back in the home is also part of this, the role of the foster care worker. And we would do that before we recommend to the court that the child be returned back. At the fiscal year-end, there were 51 children in our care. We have had as many as 72, but we've maintained in the 50s throughout this fiscal year. The adoption program is to find permanence with family when children cannot be reunified with their biological family. There were an average number of seven children in adoptive placements, and we finalized seven adoptions this last year that were DSS adoptions. We also helped private agencies. There were two of those. And we have five children in foster care who are legally free for adoption. There are many things, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I got several questions before you.
Okay, sorry.
You were, I didn't get a chance to get in.
Okay, I was told to keep it short.
With the foster care, 51 in custody in 16 homes, so we got 3-point-something in every foster home? Is that how that works?
No. Each foster home is licensed for a number of beds. Some families may only have one bed; other families may have three or more beds. It depends on the size of the house and that kind of thing. So, in, I did not bring that data, so I can't tell you how many of those kids are actually in those foster homes. But we also use group homes. We have some children who are in group home settings. We have children who are out of county. Is that, does that answer your question? So, not all of our 51 children are in those 16 licensed homes.
Okay. But would it be safe to say you desperately need qualified caring foster homes?
Yes, we're on a continuous recruitment. We have partnered with several organizations, private organizations who license foster homes, to go into the churches. We've sent letters. We're planning some major, this has been going on. This is, we try to do two-to-four MAP classes, which is our training for foster parents, and we also rely on private agencies to help us recruit foster parents. Does that answer? Mr. Peel, did you have some more?
We'll get him at the end because it's from the beginning.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So, DSS drivers, there are many things that impact or drive us. State and federal law, the state and federal budgets. Right now, we're still waiting on a state budget. When the federal government shuts down, it impacts many of our programs because that's how we get our funding. A lot of our funding comes through the federal government. Included in your packet was a June 2019 DSS financial statement. The statement is reflective of where we were, but did not include two months of revenue and one month of expenses that is, that are still outstanding. We received $175,999 additionally in state aid to DSS since that report was generated, and there will be an additional month of revenue coming. And that report shows you that we had a budget, and the, we are $500,000 as of that under spending, which we hope will, it won't be quite that, but we will continue to utilize every state and federal dollar that we can to avoid spending county dollars. But that was what that report was, and that's something we always generated for prior DSS boards, and we wanted y'all to be aware of that. Another driver for us is Medicaid transformation, which is a big deal across the state. It's changing the way most people receive Medicaid services. In 2015, the General Assembly enacted Session Law 2015-245, which directed the DHHS to transition Medicaid and North Carolina Health transition Medicaid and North Carolina Health Choice from fetus-for-service to managed care, thus the Medicaid transformation. Under the fee-for-service model, DHHS reimbursed physicians and healthcare providers based on the number of services they provided or the number of procedures they ordered. The model will now be known as NC Medicaid Direct, which will be really confusing, I think, for some of our clients. Only a small number of people statewide will stay in NC Medicaid Direct. Under managed care, instead of contracting directly with providers, the state will contract with insurance companies, and they are called prepaid health plans, or PHPs. These insurance companies will be paid a predetermined set rate per person to provide all services known as a capaci...I can't even say the word, capitated rate. This model is known as NC Medicaid Managed Care, and that's where most of our population in the state and in this county will be. Approximately 1.6 million of a current 2.1 million Medicaid beneficiaries will be transitioned to Medicaid Managed Care. On that slide, you see a small map of North Carolina regions, and you've got a bigger map in your packet, yes?
So now these insurance companies, they're stepping up to the table. They're taking on all this potential, and when the year's over, and they've given more services than they have received payment for, then that money's going to go up next year, I would presume.
Probably. That's a state negotiation, so we don't know. But yes, I expect there will be some changes after the first year. Medicaid transformation will begin impacting us, Alexander County, in September. Our...5,000 of our 7,800 recipients will be mandatory, and they will be getting enrollment packets to choose a plan. We are, as you saw on the region, we will be rolling out with other folks. Wilkes County and Watauga County have already...they're already in this process, and they will be going live in a few months, whereas we won't be going live till February. But the individuals who are mandatory, the 5,000-plus, will receive an enrollment packet. They will have to choose between October and December, and in December, they'll be auto-enrolled if they don't choose a plan. In our region, they have a choice of all five state plans. There's four state plans in one region, and we are one of the regions that had an additional choice for individuals. And as I said, in February, the plans begin assuming the responsibilities for their members, and Medicaid recipients will be assigned to them if they haven't already chosen.
May I ask a question here? I just want to interrupt you a second, okay?
Sure.
All right, I understand now that this program was going to be rolled out. In Region Two, they were supposed to be the area that was doing the sample test or running the preliminary. Have we got any kind of documentation or anything back from them to see how well that has rolled out, so that we don't go back to what we've been through before?
So it is state-run, state-delivered. They delivered packets early. I can tell you that, that individuals received packets early, and those clients were calling their DSS, and there was a lot of miscommunication.
So was the training there, though? Did they...I mean, I'm curious to know, and what bothers me the most is when this program is going to be implemented, every time I said a new program implemented in social services, it's calls to county and everybody, an arm and a leg, and made everybody mad, okay?
Yeah.
So what I'm asking is, Region Two was the one that was running the test or the test program, it was rolled out to them first. Is there any information that's come back, that's been fed back to advise what type problems they're having with this system?
So the state is there, and they're sending enrollment broker staff into those counties, but we haven't really heard anything. It's only a few weeks in. They...their packets were supposed to go out, I believe, the 8th of July. They went out the week before. They'll start having to select a provider in the coming weeks. So I think in the few weeks, probably the next time we meet, we'll have more information.
Good, okay.
But we...because it is a state-administered, we just have...I mean, we...they are doing... they contracted, they're doing everything. They're training us, and we've been at every training we can be at, but we have no control over if they change gears or not. We do have a voice, and we try to be there at the table, but we don't have that power to stop something like...but I'll keep you posted.
Okay. It's really controlled by the state.
Right, I understand. But the counties have to implement it, that's the problem.
Oh, yeah. They do, and they've...
You know what I'm saying?
I do, but it's really generated by the state. I mean...
I mean, we are at the mercy of the state in almost everything we do. So we have control over...you know, we can handhold the clients to some degree, but that...the selection of a provider has now been taken out of our hands. Under regular Medicaid, the DSS staff linked the client with their provider. So we would sit down and say, "What doctor do you go to? Who do you want to see? These are your choices." Now they have to call an 800 number, and they have choice counseling, and it is not at the DSS. So the reason we're talking about this is it's going to generate a lot of phone calls and a lot of upset people, a lot of folks who don't understand, but it will be out of our hands in that we are not allowed to link them with a provider. They have to contact this other outside entity to do all that. So...but we want to keep you informed, and we want to try to keep the public as informed. And as we get information, we are planning to share that. There'll be some community posters, there'll be community discussions. We'll do whatever we can to make sure our clientele is aware of what's going on.
Okay.
So you mentioned all the state things that happened to us. NCFAST is another one, and it remains cumbersome for our eligibility programs, and all of our eligibility programs are in NCFAST now. There are plans to roll out child welfare statewide into NCFAST, but there have been so many issues with it that they have finally slowed it down. But it is still there, and it is still troublesome. Yes, sir.
Okay. So we all kind of know what NCFAST is?
Yes, North Carolina families accessing services through technology. That is how we issue all of our benefits. It is how the client can now go online through a portal and actually apply online. So it takes their need to come to our office off the table unless they just want to come to us. So they can do everything electronically, but because it is a computer system, there's lots of glitches. If the system's down, it impacts it. There...you have to get an ID from another entity, and if that's down, it causes issues with the NCFAST. So there are a lot of issues, and we continue to struggle with that. Our data is not 100% solid. We have had clients who had address changes that just happened. You know, we don't know how some things happen, and I guess it's whatever the programming is, or another program impacts something. They've made a change on Medicaid, let's say, but now it's impacting the food and nutrition benefits. So we continue to see that. We saw major issues when child welfare was first implemented, in that foster care payments weren't being issued. Guilford County reported being owed millions of dollars for their foster children because the system wasn't generating the payments. So we're very reluctant to try to go into that system, and so we're...yeah, we're keeping ourselves out of it as long as we can.
It's not as fast?
No, it is not fast.
NC slow.
Refusal would be a better word than reluctant.
Well, reluctantly refusing. We are being passively refusing. So NCFAST there...so the other thing that we undergo are audits, and these increase every year. Medicaid is the largest program, and it is also...it undergoes the most audits. We have the county single audit, we have federal audits of Medicaid such as PERM, which is Payment Error Rate Measurements, and we have MEQC, which is Medicaid Eligibility QC, and this is where state contractors come in, federal contractors come in and check our records, looking for errors. We also are mandated under 108A-70.46 for some additional county audits, and we're part of that process next year, starting in December and January, where we have 20 records pulled per month by the Office of Program Compliance, and they will be doing that for 10 months, looking at our records. Medicaid has a payback criteria, so if there is an error on a case that was worker-generated, county responsible error, then the county is responsible for not only the state share, the federal share, and the per-member per month, which is why I gave you that cost. We had 49...or potentially had $49 million worth of claims for our recipients. If a high-dollar dialysis person or somebody in long-term care were to have their eligibility determined incorrectly, that would be a huge payback. So we have now...you guys approved QA staff for us the year before last, and they're finally fully staffed, and they're working, they're checking records. We're also mandated to do our own QC internally in addition to all these audits. So auditing is like nonstop. We just had the single audit folks in our office last week. So it's a nonstop process, and the state auditor will also be doing some additional audits this year. So that is just sort of what drives our work. Additionally, we're guided by our commitment to our clients and their confidentiality, and that is one of the highest things that we hold dear, is a client's confidentiality. And there are many state and federal laws guiding what we share and who we share it with, and we just want you to know that that continues. So this was a very high-level review of some of the work we do, but it does end my presentation, and I'll be happy to continue to answer questions.
A little bit of a question, but more of an acknowledgement. Somewhere about, I don't know, page 20. Sorry about that. Almost a million dollars in childcare subsidies goes into our local economy.
Oh, yeah, that was on an earlier page, on page nine, I think, 10.
And then another nearly $5 million in food and nutrition benefits. But then the piece that really hit me in the head was what you said just a minute ago, almost $50 million in Medicaid claims. So while we're called to be nice and to help people and to provide services, you have to be a two-headed entity in kindness and niceness and serving and being an accountant at the same time.
Oh, yeah. We have to know tax law, we have to know IRS regs.
Millions and millions, and I mean, those three programs was $70 million in a year.
And staff is bound by timely, the MOUs, and which is why we wrote the letter of protest. So it's continual.
I mean, I don't think people understand how much money goes into services that goes through our DSS and our Health Department and our Senior Center, millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars, far greater than our total budget many times over. It's quite an administration, really, when you think about it. So it was not really a question, just wanted to draw attention to that and to think that there's that much services being rendered right here in our small, little county.
One quick question, and you may not know this off the top of your head, but as far as Medicaid goes, or any of the other ones, do you see, since the economy has improved, I mean, have you seen a reduction in the amount that has flowed through, or has it remained relatively the same?
So in food, I did bring some stat...I did not share this. I'd be happy to provide this with you. But for example, in food and nutrition, we had 4,000, just over 4,000 recipients at the beginning of last fiscal year, and we ended at 30...I think I said 3,870. So we've lost a few now. In food and nutrition, there's also something called ABOD, able-bodied, working individuals without disabilities. So if a person is able-bodied, they are allowed to get three months of food stamps every three years, and that just cycled back in January. So all those individuals who are able-bodied but are not working, they would have come on in January and then come right back off in March. And if they provide...they can prove to us that they're doing 20 hours of some sort of work. It can be voluntary, but not paid, meaning...but they have to be engaged in something, whether it's volunteer through helping a charity do something, or...but those folks are coming off. So that's part of where we're at, but yes, the economy. Medicaid's not seen as much of a reduction, but you've got the Affordable Care Act. Every November, the marketplace opens, and then because of the Affordable Care Act, all those applications that go up to the federal government to buy health insurance, if they have a child, or there are certain criteria, they get dumped back down to us. So in November and December and January, we get huge volumes of applications. So that then turns back around, that we do see an increase. So Medicaid, we haven't seen quite the decrease, but yes, the economy has gotten better, and we do see that. Daycare, for example, has reduced. Folks are able to pay for their childcare, and so, yeah, we do see that, but there's always a need. There are always individuals who need our support.
And I would say, you know, most of the public doesn't understand how much money not coming out of the local property taxes, but how much money goes into DSS that just flows through, through the federal and state government, and then you guys are the administrators, and you have to figure out where that money needs to go. And just like Chairman Peel said, it's millions upon millions upon millions of dollars, and you have to provide adequate oversight. I mean, you know, you've got to keep a watch on those dollars, because those are taxpayer dollars, and taxpayers deserve it nonetheless.
And I want to say kudos to staff at DSS, because they do process...we meet our processing timelines even when we're lower-staffed, which helps avoid paybacks. We QC more cases than the state requires. We do so many things over and above just to make sure that we're not getting the county into a liability situation.
Thank you. That was very good.
Thank you, Patricia. They do have very challenging roles and very important for our county, and you'll hear more about that. I'm going to review the public health piece for you. You'll meet more staff as we go forward. This is our first meeting, and we do have an Assistant Health Director that you'll get to know in future meetings. So next slide, Chad. And again, we're going to do that 50,000-foot...for many of you, this will be a review. Hope it's a refresher for...some of you have been on the Board of Health. The Board of Health orientation, part of this requirement and some of the things we're hitting is for our accreditation. Your Health Department is accredited, and every four years, we go through a process, and I've included in your packets insomnia treatment, which will meet our regulation. Didn't y'all like that? Did you catch that? That meets our accreditation regulation, but I won't bore the public and everybody else here and make you sit there another hour to do it. I trust you'll review it, and if you have questions, contact me. I'd be happy to go in more in-depth as you need it. So today, we're going to just hit the high spots. The history of the Health Department. On the next slide, you'll see, "Our mission is to achieve a healthy community by protecting and promoting public health through education, training, provision of health services, and advocacy." Some of you may not know, the Health Department was established in 1945, which, thank goodness, was way before my time. Way. Y'all got that too, right? We won't go into details. Some of the...helps if your papers are right side up to read it. The areas we focus on in public health is health promotion, intervention, and disease prevention. North Carolina Public Health Statute is General Statute, Chapter 130A. I just about have that memorized. It's certainly bookmarked in my...all my manuals. The General Assembly recognizes the public health system as necessary in all counties to ensure that a foundation is provided in all counties, regardless of where you're at. And that General Statute... And that general statute on the next slide goes into great detail about each of the areas that we focus on. The prevention, I'm not going to read all this to you, but prevention, we identify health risk and try to mediate that. Many times every year, I bring to you the State of the County's Health Report. And every three years, the CHA, as we call it, Community Health Assessment, which goes into great detail. We look at, you know, what's taking our lives early? What are the risk factors? How can we intervene? What programs do we not have and need? We work a lot with direct investigating, communicable disease, and preventing spread. You always hear my flu spill, and I pushed flu shots about September or so. Even more so this year, probably, right? And we, of course, promote safe, healthy environments. I was thrilled to hear, you know, we're talking a lot about sidewalks and how can we promote, you know, biking and activity and getting our community moving and fresh fruits and vegetables and all the areas that we focus on. Availability and access of health services. You know, we have two new programs that we've implemented primary care in the last two years because we kept having the uninsured say they couldn't access. They were using the emergency room, large bills. They just really didn't have access to services. And behavioral health. We are within a week or two of having that social worker onboard and that program up and running, and we're ecstatic. Because we've been hearing that for years and years. Our job is not to provide services unless we can't access them. Dental, remember back years ago, I guess 10 years now? We, for 20 years, lack of child dental care for the Medicaid and uninsured was an issue. And so we couldn't access that. We tried recruiting, we tried, we tried lots of methods. And so we did establish, we found a grant and established a health department dental clinic that has served us so well. Our decay rates went from one in four children entering kindergarten with major decay, within two years, that came to one in 10. And I would say it's a lot better now. I'll put that on my to-do list, which is pretty long, so. The next core functions is all the areas that we focus on. Assessment, policy development, and assurance. All those fit within the slide we just reviewed. I'm going to move on in lieu of time. Our assessment process, again, we do that community health assessment, the SACH assessment. We bring that to you to try to inform the public and look at areas that we need to improve. We work on policy development. Remember, years ago, public health has had a great impact in seatbelt laws, bike helmet laws, smoking. The statistics win the smoke-free restaurant and government buildings. The risk of heart attack decreased within that first year drastically, just from secondhand smoke. All those were public health policy development areas that were worked on. You don't always see that, because that's kind of quiet behind the scenes. But public health is hard at work doing that. Assurance is where we assure that there is access and there's a minimal level of services for all citizens. And that's, again, behavioral health, primary care, some of those programs that we still do. We do, not all counties do, provides maternal health care, but there's not an OB-GYN in Alexander County. So the health department is the only local provider for maternity care. Again, that's in that assurance, that the services is here and accessible. It's a lot cheaper to provide preventive services than to take care of the back end. One infant that has to stay in the neonatal intensive care unit can cost more than our program 10 times. So we're out there trying to get people in early prenatal care and have the healthiest pregnancy possible. The 10 essential services of public health, you will see exactly what we have to be, we're mandated by the state to do these 10 essential services. Again, I'm not going to read them all to you. Lots of them, we do, you don't think about, like, linking people to health services. Many times, we don't provide the services, but when people call us, we link them to those services. We work very closely with all of our county programs. Sometimes we feel like we're the phone book, and that's fine. If somebody needs something, we're happy to answer their questions. If we don't know the answer, then we work really hard to find it. Lots of times, it's just, where do I find this? Where do I go? What, do you know the phone number to DSS? And we do. I have a great staff that is better than the phone book, which we don't really have anymore, do we? It's kind of Google. They're almost as good as Google for Alexander County. Programs, we definitely reviewed programs last time. The two newest ones, primary care and behavioral health, I've already mentioned. I'm going to touch on these, so if someone listening may, maybe something that they hadn't thought about or heard. Child health clinic, we do. Care coordination, we do care coordination. It's, some of these are nurses and some are social workers. But for children and pregnant women, we want pregnant women. A good example I get of OB-managed care is, we have a WIC program, Women, Infants, and Children's. We make sure that that pregnant mom can eat healthy. We provide them food and nutrition. So let's say they go to the grocery store and get their gallon of milk, but they go home to no electricity. Where are they going to put their milk? So this case manager looks at the whole person, the whole family, to make sure that they're getting all of their needs met so that they can have a healthy pregnancy, be prepared for this infant, think about childcare, going back to work. All those things that go into being the parent to hopefully prevent them from needing Department of Social Services child protective referrals. So that's kind of our case management in a nutshell. The other children is also the same thing. Educating that parent, making sure they have a medical provider, that they use that medical provider instead of the emergency room. One of the benefits of the proposed benefits, and I hope this comes to fruition, for Medicaid managed care is to teach those folks to not go to the emergency room for an ear infection. You know, that's not the best place to start. That's the same thing our case managers do. Make sure they have a medical home. It doesn't do a client good to pick a medical home out of county if they don't have transportation. So sometimes just helping them process, what's the smartest plan? The scary part for me with Ms. Baker's presentation is that we can't have more of a role in that. So hopefully, we can figure out how to not cross the lines with what the state will allow us to do, but help our public. And we're negotiating that, because we are going to get a lot of those questions. And I hope the state does a great job with those brokers. Time will tell. I don't know. We better move on, haven't we? That's a touchy subject. All right. Accreditation, I provided you more information in your packet. There is all kinds of insomnia treatment in there. If you read something and are not sure, I'll touch on accreditation as we go forward. Accreditation has very in-depth. Lots of standards and benchmarks. It may, it may seem like, well, you know, the benchmarks are pretty doable. But under each benchmark, each benchmark, some of them have eight pieces of data we have to submit. A good example is annually, we have, I have to prove that we have notified all of our partners of how to contact us after hours. So, you know, that's emailing all other department heads with an updated list and education on, if you need a communicable disease, this is who you call. If you need an emergency, this is who you call. I mean, there's all different areas. If it's an environmental health problem, this is the contact person. And at the top is my, all my contact information. And luckily, our county does a great job. I don't get lots of calls, but occasionally, I will get a weekend call. Usually, that comes from our communications department. And I think they have that pinned up handy. Hopefully, they have it pinned on their board so they can contact us. Last time, we only missed one standard. So our review is in 2020, coming up way too soon. We've actually implemented several things that will make that accreditation process better. One of the things was accessing through our front door was a little difficult. The doors were heavy, you had to pull them open. We had a bell that you could push, but, you know, you were, if it was raining, you're going to get drowned till we could come open the door for you. And so we were able to, with no county dollars, get a grant. And we have a new sliding front door. We have new pavement that's not cracked. We have new flooring to transition into the lobby, and we've expanded that lobby. So maybe next meeting, I'll bring you some before and after pictures, but we are really proud of that new health department space and our new administrative space across the parking lot. I think will serve us well, well into the future. And we're kind of getting situated. That was a big transition, just, you know, we'd never been in two buildings. And, but we've went from two clinic exam rooms to six. Now we're adding three rooms for behavioral health, and we've expanded the lobby, which was greatly needed. You can access the front door, you walk up, it opens, and you are right in quickly. We took out that planter that was, you know, children ran around, and we were always worried they were going to fall and break something. So it's gone, we don't have to worry about dead plants and trying to keep the weeds out of it. It's just much more efficient, looks a lot better to the eye. So can I answer any questions on public health? That was totally a refresher, wasn't it? All right, and?
And from accreditation standpoint, we will be involved with those people whenever they come into town.
You will, as the governing board. And I will prepare you for that. It's really not scary. They've cut down on the interviews, and it used to be a three-day process. And now it is a day and a half process. We have, last year, they polited three counties for an electronic submission process. And so everyone goes live this year. I've actually had training, it's very user-friendly. We're really excited about it. Before, we had to download everything on a jump drive. You worried about, of course, we didn't mail confidential information, but you still worried about, did it get there? They had to copy it, send it out to the surveyors. And now, it's all going to be in a secure portal, and we can upload every day as we go. Whereas before, we'd have to spend a month before getting all of our data uploaded, getting it linked, making sure hyperlinks worked. Now, we load that as we go. It's actually a management entity system. So it's definitely a better process. And it's only a day and a half. They've shortened the interviews. Mr. French County Manager has been here, so he is not going to have to be interviewed this time. I'm sure he's disappointed at that. But we will ask a couple of you to be in on a 45-minute interview process. And if you can't be here, they can do it by phone. So they interview our community partners, all of the management team at the health department. And before they get here, they will have reviewed all of our data that we submitted for those 140-some standards. And you'll, trust me, closer to 2020, you'll get more information. But good question, any more? All right. And last, in order, but not of importance. This was a hard decision. I was like, okay, who goes first, who goes last? So this time was alphabetical. DSS, with a D, Health Department. And now, I'd like to introduce your Senior Center Director, Christine Gates, who will give you an orientation to the Senior Center.
Okay. I did some refining on my PowerPoint this weekend, and then I changed the order of it. So what you have in your packet is not what I'm presenting, but you have all the information, and I've deleted 10 slides. Isn't that good news?
We like that.
Okay, all right. So I'm going to cover some things from the, for the Senior Center. Just three things, Medicare savings, participation, and funding. And we want to thank the county commissioners for supporting the Senior Center over the years and providing Senior Centers three wonderful places to gather. And so, in Slide 2, the mission statement is simply, "The Alexander Senior Center is a county organization that provides a focal point for aging resources as well as the opportunities to extend independent living and enrich the quality of life for older adults in Alexander County. As a friendly and vibrant activity center for seniors, we strive to be a remedy for loneliness and isolation. As we go through our days, we hold these truths close to our heart. We love our seniors and welcome everyone into the center to participate in the activities that they, that they want to join. We do Medicare casework for seniors and the disabled. We have a wide array of exercise classes as well as social and recreational classes. We help seniors explore hobbies and build new interests. We hold various seminars on topics of interest to our seniors like healthy living. Being a friendly and welcoming place is important to us as we continue to enrich the lives of older adults in Alexander County." So on Slide 3, Chad, the slide numbers are tiny, 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 down on the bottom corner of the, of the slide. So Slide 3, we have three locations to serve the different areas of the county. Taylorsville, Bethlehem, and Stony Point. The Taylorsville location, at this point, we're so full, we only have two weekly time slots open for additional activities. And we have two to three time slots available for like adding in an additional monthly activity. So if you wanted to add in another health promotion class or another seminar, we've really got to work hard to try and get those worked into, into the schedule because we're just full. So in Taylorsville, we could certainly use more room. In Stony Point, that center is open one day a week, and it's run by a volunteer instructor who teaches a really successful painting class. And we're thrilled to have her. So we'll talk about Bethlehem later, because it's a little bit bigger. So in Slide 4, I just want to explain that during Medicare open enrollment period for 2019, which happened between October 15th and December 7th, 2018, we helped 421 unique people and saved them a total of $826,775,000 on their Medicare Part D drug plan. That money stays here in the pockets of our seniors. It's not a tax credit or a handout, but a true savings of money that they keep because we help them choose the right drug plan, which makes their costs lower. Also in the year, or in the open enrollment period, just that October to December, included in that $826,000, there's an additional $145,236 of Social Security Administration extra help and low-income subsidy savings for seniors, for low-income seniors. At the direction of the North Carolina Department of Insurance and the SHIP program, each extra help application is calculated as a $6,916,000 savings. To, that's a direct benefit to these seniors for free or reduced drug plan premiums. It reduces their medicine costs, and it reduces their co-pays.
How much was that again? Number at the beginning of that? 600 and what?
It's 6,916. Did I say, I think I did say 600 and some thousand. It's $6,916 per, per senior. In addition to the $826,000, we also saved an additional $284,131 during the rest of the year, which would be January 1st through October 14th. So the total annual savings for all of last year, for 2018, was $1,110,906. Previously, we have not tracked the money saved outside of open enrollment. It didn't seem to be that significant. We reported all those contacts to SHIP, but we didn't, we didn't track all of it and combine it. So the annual savings comparisons are not direct comparisons unless you just examine the open enrollment savings for the other previous years. And even in, in this last year, this was our largest savings year at the $826,000. That's a lot of money to save. We're very proud of the financially important help we can offer seniors during open enrollment, as well as the casework we provide during the year for people who age into the Medicare system during the year. Because weeding through the world of Medicare is confusing and overwhelming for everyone. So people come in very stressed when they're coming in, aging into the Medicare system, and then and then we sit down and we talk to them for an hour or so, or we do a seminar, and they're all smiles and say, whoa, let me go take this home and read it, I think I really understand it and I will be back with my drug plan choice. So in Slide Five, there's a summary of the, the savings. So the top one where you see the one point one million dollars, that was for the entire And included the savings for the 2019 year. The next one below is the savings for the 2018 year that we did during open enrollment in 2017. This gets a little bit weird, but it's four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars. And then you can see 2017 and 2016, there's additional savings. So we're right around a half a million dollars in previous years from all of my eight years' experience, but this year was pretty great. And in Slide Number Six, this year, we're on track with our 2018 savings. As of June, we've already saved seniors one hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. Okay, so if I move on to participation numbers, which is the little charts, and Slide Seven, the little colored charts, Senior Center participation, it's in your packet and it, it shows you the 2015 to 2019 years, so that you can compare them historically. I didn't include them in the PowerPoint because you can see them in your, in your packet. But I do want to explain the duplicated versus the unduplicated numbers. Unduplicated numbers are the total number of unique people that came into the Senior Center that month. So during a one-month period, one person is only counted one time. And that's in the, the unduplicated numbers. Now, if you look at the duplicated numbers, those are the total number of activities participated in during a month by an individual. So for example, Mrs. Smith may come in for three activities a week. That would make her duplicated number twelve, but her unduplicated number one. So that's why there's these big number discrepancies. And we like to see how many unique people are coming in, so that we know, we can gather more data and then we like to see how many times they come in during the month. Okay, so in Slide Eight, Slide Eight. You can see we've had the best months in, for all of our sites, in January, February and April of 2019, which is unusual for a winter, usually those are really low-attended months. We nearly tied a best record for March, but we were just a little bit short. And my best analysis of why this might have happened for a winter is that even though we had storms, outside of those storm days, we had mild weather and people just didn't want to be stuck in the house. So they came into the, into the Senior Center. The charts, the, the colored charts with the zigzaggy lines, those are always expressed in duplicated numbers, so that you can see the total number of people and the impact on the building and use of toilet paper and stuff like that. So Slide Number Nine, this is Bethlehem specifically. Slide Number Eight is all the centers combined. Slide Number Nine, where it says Bethlehem participation, that's just Bethlehem because they, they, they just, Christie does a great job over there. Her numbers are up, they're still up, they're still the best we've had over there in Bethlehem. It keeps growing. We currently, we're currently using space, lots and lots of space inside of Mount Piscata Lutheran Church on Highway one twenty-seven. They have so generously hosted us there at their expense since 2013. They're always accommodating and flexible with our scheduling needs and we couldn't appreciate them more. They've, they've just been great since we've been there. However, it would be wonderful to have a permanent dedicated Bethlehem location where we could maybe open the doors three days a week instead of two, or even more days. As the church use is now, we have lots of time invested in set-up and tear-down of the room throughout the day because it's not our own facility. So when we come in in the morning, we move everything around to suit our needs and then before we leave, we've got to put everything back like we were never there. But it would be great to have a, our own place. All right, so the last section, we're almost done, is funding. We have, we've got five revenue streams for funding. And in Slide Eleven, the Home and Community Care Block Grant, or the HCCBG as it's affectionately known, it funds the Senior Center operations. All of this funding is used to supplant staff salaries. We currently receive, and there's three of us, we currently receive five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. That is a single share of the HCCBG block grant for Senior Centers. Or annually, that's sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. In Slide Twelve, the Director, that would be me, I'm working towards Senior Center of Excellence designation, which will mean that the Senior Center will receive three shares of that HCCBG funding, accounting for sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a month instead of the fifty-six hundred. And that would mean an annual income of two hundred and two thousand, five hundred. And that would be a, a great increase to expand or do, make some other plans for the Senior Center, that we could serve more seniors and have bigger spaces and get along-
What do you have to do to get that?
Um, I've got to go through training. It takes about, we should be done in, I should be done in 2020 and then the funding would hopefully start early twenty, twenty-two. I've got to complete, I've done three modules and I've got to complete six of them. And then there's about a year where the state comes and looks at the facilities and you go through like a-
Would that be a two hundred and two thousand, five hundred additionally or including the sixty-seven?
Including, including. So, so we've got big plans for that.
Sorry, one question. So after the, if it's a Senior Center of Excellence designation, does it stay that way forever or?
No, you've got to, I believe it's every two years, you've got to go through your scope certification, recertification.
Continuing education-like, or is it, you just got to do the whole program again?
No, you don't have to do the whole program again. There pro, there are continuing ed, there's other trainings and you recertify every year where you have a group of Senior Center Directors from around the state that will come in and look at your program. They come in and look at your, I think it's about a hundred and twenty pages of documentation you've got to provide and make sure that that's all in order and your programs are the way they should be. And then you, you just recertify.
Okay, sorry.
Mm-hmm. So in Slide Thirteen, our next source of revenue besides the HCCBG is a general purpose funding. It's through HCCBG, but it can be used for many things like technology, furniture supplies, salaries. But it's not funded every year and the amount varies, but it's generally around thirty-seven hundred dollars. But we'll take it. SHIP grant, this is through the North Carolina Department of Insurance and they fund the casework we do for Medicare, mostly during open enrollment. We use the, the funding every year to hire Medicare specialists who help us with open enrollment, with a lot of administrative and data entry tasks. We still do the counseling. The funding varies greatly from year to year with congressional approval. And in the last five years, the grant funding has ranged from twenty-seven hundred to fifty, fifty-seven hundred. In Slide Fifteen, another revenue stream is the North, another North Carolina Department of Insurance SHIP program, it's called MIPA. And it's for outreach for low-income, disabled rural and minority populations. And this grant is typically around seventeen hundred dollars. So the total grant funding for the Senior Center is approximately seventy-five thousand, six hundred dollars annually. In some years, there's additional unused funding within the county's HCCBG agencies that we can receive and use. And, but that's unpredictable, we don't know that till the end of the year. But that is the end of my presentation and we would like to thank you, the Board of Commissioners, for your continued support of the Senior Center and understanding how valuable it is for our senior population. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One more agenda item and I think it will be quick. We have a draft policy and I think we have two options tonight. You can continue to review it till our next meeting, which is scheduled not for August but September the ninth. Our plan is to meet every other month as a consolidated board. And the off-month is our advisory committee. I think we have eighteen appointed to our advisory committee. That's rough, sorry I haven't, Ms. Dorance has shared that, but it's left to be opened on my computer. Life's been full this month. But there is a draft policy and the, the point, and this policy has been reviewed by, county attorney has reviewed this. We, we want to start off on the right foot and realizing that Department of Social Services particularly, although the Health Department has HIPAA privacy health information that we're very careful about sharing, the Department of Social Services has lots of confidential information in all of their programs. The draft policy is in your packet, it's, it's not very lengthy, a page and a half. It's the General Statute one oh eight, A dash eleven and General Statute one fifty-three, A dash seventy-seven. Since you're assuming the duties and powers of the Social Services Governing Board, you need to understand what you can access and what you can't and how that information will be accessed. Just upfront, that way we're all on the same page. We are going to be very by the book with that information and not get us in any legal issues. If you need to see confidential information, it won't just be shared with one of you on an individual basis, it will be brought to the board meeting and we'll go into closed session, just like you go into closed session or included in your closed session as the Board of County Commissioners. And it will be reviewed by all. Whether it's child protective, adult protective, economic services, just keeps us all above board. So, you know, if you had read it and were at a point, I, you know, you could certainly approve that tonight, or if you want to hold it over for further deliberation, we can include that in September ninth.
I'd go ahead and approve it.
Yeah, let's do it.
So basically what you're saying is, and I'm, I know what you're saying, but I'm saying this for-
Clarify for the public.
So basically what you're saying is that we're going to be seeing confidential information and that we're going to have procedures and policies in place to make sure that none of that confidential information, well, first of all, that we don't see it unless there is a need for us to see it.
Exactly.
It's on a need-to-know basis. If we do see any kind of confidential information, that there's a process in place to make sure that that confidentiality stays here.
Exactly. That was the other piece needed to reiterate, is that you don't share that. You know, that's very delicate issues, people's, things that happen privately in their homes, their income information, lots of private information, private health information that you can't. And we, we stress this, we have lots of training within our staff, within our departments. I'll give you an easy health example because I understand those better. When we had the home health program, I would tell my home health staff, you know, even if the neighbor down the street says, "I saw your car at Miss Smith's," you can't acknowledge that, you cannot go into detail, you know, yes, they may have seen a county car there, but you can't divulge that they even were a patient, you know, that, you can say, well, you, why don't you call and check on her? You know, kind of turn it around. So same thing with y'all, you know, you may have the public call and say, "I called in a report, I mean, they're beating that child next door, I hear it screaming." Hopefully not, but I'm making a drastic example. You know, you, if you have heard that, and you won't, only high-level things will get to you, you know, that's what you have us and staff for. You, you may never need to see any protected information. But we felt like if we did this upfront and we all knew what we needed to do, then if the situation arose, we would have a policy and procedure and we'd be prepared to handle it. You know, we, you may not, but if you do, then you could not share that. You know, you'd have to say, that's, you know, private information.
There should be no reason for us to see anyone's private information unless there is a serious problem.
For instance, if there was a lawsuit or something legal coming about, potentially. But yes, otherwise, and that's in a nutshell what this is. You know, you understand what is confidential, how it is going to go into closed session and then it cannot be shared any further. And it wouldn't be shared just with one of you. You know, Commissioner Mayberry couldn't come and say, "I want to see the record for my cousin." That's not appropriate because you don't need to know that, that's protected information. So, is that a, but that's great, thank you.
I would entertain a motion that we approve the draft policy governing board access to confidential social service information. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen. We were, the goal was an hour and thank you for both of those directors trying to keep it concise and to the point.
I, I will point out one thing, that one of the reasons that we wanted to do this, but there's, there's so many overlap between the Senior Center, the Health Department and DSS, that I really think this is really going to help the mission as far as what, you know, your mission statements are and how you're supposed to help the public, share, sharing information. There, there's so many places where overlap occurs, so I think this is going to be a good thing in the long run.
When I said a minute ago, everybody understands being nice to people and helping them. But there's a whole lot of business that goes in behind this too and the consolidate efforts of all being on the same page and knowing and doing and, I mean, that's, that's a big, big revenue influx of money that goes through these programs that's really astounding. I mean, public knowledge of that is very minimal and, you know, we would like to, you know, educate the public more and better about critical numbers that, you know, the number of thousands of people that are fed and that receive, not who they are, but just the, the need that we see here. Because a lot of people think, well, you know, I'm, I'm fine, I'm okay. My neighbor's okay and my son and my own daughter, they're okay, so we're all okay. But there's a whole lot beyond that scope that's not okay.
Well, and how many people after tonight, hearing what the Senior Center does to help our citizens with getting the best Medicare plan and looking, you know, I mean, how many people didn't even realize that was an opportunity out there, so?
Million dollars.
Yeah.
I bet there's three times that much if we got more people in to help. And we want, we want to thank you, giving your time, we realize you're, you're adding to your board meeting, even if we try to keep it to a minimum, you're giving up your time and you're having to add duties, responsibilities and meeting time. So we will be cognizant of your time and try to streamline it as much as we can. So thank you.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion that we go into closed session for our North Carolina General Statute one four three, dash three one eight, point one one, A three, four, five and six, Attorney Comp, Privilege Economic Development Contractual Personnel. We will go into this and adjourn, only to adjourn. So I would entertain a motion to do so now.
Second.
Any discussion all in favor, please raise your- Any discussion all in favor, please raise your right hand. We will now enter into closed session. Thank you for being here.